I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Beggarly.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? Councilman?
I'd like to make a comment toward the end on Memorial Day.
On Memorial Day, okay. And I would like to make a comment under new business, if I may, about the organizational study. Are there any, do we approve of the consent items, Senator?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearings are at, Kathy, would you like to speak to that, please? I will open the hearing at this particular time.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. The first scheduled hearing is on the general obligation sewer revenue note. And this is a financing that is proposed to finance the Western Interceptor project cost. The total project cost is $2,650,017. The financing would come through a low interest rate loan from the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority in the amount of $1,886,812. And the PFA would also provide what's referred to as a WIF grant of $763,205 to complete the 2.65 million financing for the interceptor. The, this financing has been included as a part of the work that we've been doing relative to wastewater treatment facility rates. And it will be coming before the council for consideration at a future date. But those projections have included this project. It's anticipated that the debt service will be paid from those sewer revenues. So I'd be happy to answer questions if you had any.
At this particular time, it is open to the public if you would like to ask a question or comment. Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion at the council. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy, I have a question on the Western Interceptor. Part of that was paid for by local option sales tax. Is that, is that right? When we say 2.6 total cost, that's the total, is that the grand total? Or is that just the total that we're looking to finance? Or how much did local option sales tax pay of that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Anderson, I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Okun if he has the answer to that. I don't have the full budget. I have the piece that is being financed.
Mayor, members of the council, the total budget started out initially at $4.9 million. And that was in April of 2011, preliminary numbers. In December of 2012, that was adjusted downward to $4.5 million. And some storm sewer work was added at that time. And those were final bid numbers. Just recent action of the council to add a section from the Western Collector easterly to the old airport terminal was added in the amount of another $345,000. Now, that amount is covered totally by local option sales tax. The stormwater work is covered by capital dollars that the council had re-appropriated from other capital, primarily vehicles, in 2012. So that brings the total approved budget that the council adopted in April to $4.8 million. Of that amount, roughly 34% is covered through the local option sales tax. The remaining amount is through this note as well as the grant from PFA.
Okay. That's what I wanted. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt, assign a number, and publish.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt an ordinance, assign a number, and order the final publication. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Beggarly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries. Kathy, do you want to explain the second one?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the second issue before you is for the 2013 street improvement project financing. And your projects 1301 and 1303 are included in this financing. The, excuse me, the bond financed cost would be covered by a bond issue in the amount of $1,950,000. Of that amount, just a moment. In addition to that, assessments of about $1.3 million will be levied against benefited properties. And there's also some money from the City Community Investment Fund that is helping to fund those projects. The, we had prepared recommendations that I think have been distributed to you. The balance that is not covered by assessments is, on average, projected to be about $63,000 a year. We understand that the city's current intent is to pay that from the City Community Investment Fund and defray any levies that would otherwise need to be made. There are two actions relative to this item this evening. One would be the adoption of the ordinance relative to the issuance of the bonds. And then also a second resolution that provides for the sale of the bonds themselves, which would occur in July.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We forgot to open the hearing on that, but the hearing is open. And if there's any comment from the audience, hearing done, I will close the hearing and open it up for discussion with the council. Councilman Christensen?
I'll move the authorization of issuance of the bond.
Second.
Is that the motion to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it? If that would be the motion, then roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
If my numbers are correct here, by, the Community Investment Fund paid $484,113. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the ordinance that you have in your packet explains how much the Community Investment Fund will pay over the 10-year period. The amount financed of 1.9 million, the amount assessed is 1.3. The difference between that is covered by the Community Investment Fund.
Right, $484.
The difference between the total cost and the amount financed through the bond issue are covered from other various revenue sources like municipal state aid funds and some lost money for some trails.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman?
With these bonds, maybe Kathy can answer. What has been the expected interest rate or the, that the bonds have been selling for lately?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember DeBleek, the estimate that we did at the time that the recommendations were done indicated a, an average rate, if you will, of about 1.4. The market has been moving up a little bit over the, especially over the last week and last Friday. So it may be a little higher than that, but it still should be a very attractive rate with a one handle, if you will.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Beggarly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries. And a second resolution?
I would introduce a resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to authorize the sale of the bonds. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Beggarly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries. I have to ask, did I close the public hearing?
You did. You did. Yes, you did.
Thank you, dear. I have a presentation to make and talking about the mayor's prayer breakfast. We had a wonderful turnout. We had close to 400 people, if I may. And I would like to report to the community on the recent prayer breakfast. Well, some might think that the mayor needs a few prayers, and he does. Our speakers kept to a biblical script. Mr. Christensen, John Chapin, Community Christian School gave an excellent, and he's gotten excellent reviews from the speeches or the talk that he made about the city and his vision of our city and what we have to pray about. And I want to thank each and every person that was, had, that came at 6 o'clock in the morning, but also for all the help that we had. I would like to speak, to thank all those people that helped with the mayor's prayer breakfast. And at this time, I had promised that we would give the proceeds from that to the Community Development and Ed Recreation Department. And Steve, would you please step forward and accept the check and also tell us what we can expect that we'd be done with the money?
I'll give you a little update before you hand that over. How's that sound? Annually, Community Education and Recreation tries to support the youth of our program that cannot afford the fees that are charged for programming within our department. And anywhere between 80 and 140 young people ask us for assistance on an annual basis. The cost of that programming is somewhere in the neighborhood between $1,500 and $3,500 annually, depending on the number of requests. Our policy for scholarships are that each young person is offered an opportunity to request scholarships through our Child Guide program. One scholarship per catalog. So bottom line is, we have three catalogs a year. So each catalog that comes out, a young person can pick through the catalog of offerings and pick one opportunity to be a part of. And we'll help support that. So annually, we've gotten support from a number of service clubs in the past. PAC 4 has supported that as well. And this year, I'm happy to receive the gift from the mayor's prayer breakfast for that support.
And thank you for joining the mayor's prayer breakfast, by the way. And I have a check here for $1,663. And please make good use of it with the young people. Thank you very much. And I would like to thank special donors, if I may. The Fisher Laser Eye Center and the Noon Kiwanis on Tuesdays and Cash Lines Grocery. And if I'm forgetting someone, I promise I will say it at the next council meeting. But I think that's it. Moving into the next part of our meeting, we have a distinguished service award presentation to Civic Center manager Kevin Matson. Mr. Worsham, would you, okay, you're coming up to the podium. Introduce yourselves and...
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and the rest of the city employees. I'm here tonight to present an award that I feel is very deserving. My name's Lee Worsham. I live at 7370 Northeast 36th Street in Wilmer, Minnesota, at Eagle Lake. And I'm here tonight in behalf of Crossroads. It's a DT&amp;H. We're located over an industrial park. And DT&amp;H, it's a day treatment and habilitation services here in the community. We work under MSOCs, the Minnesota State Operated Community Services. That's who we're licensed under. And we typically have about 52 clients in our workforce. It's a workforce here in the community. Some of the jobs that you've probably seen us in the community do are, we're doing lawn mowing for businesses and individuals, snow removal, janitorial work, in-house packaging for like Northern State Supply and any other larger businesses. We work at the community center across from Robins Island there from 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning, doing some cleanup and janitorial work. But the reason I'm here tonight is where I do most of my work is, and that's out at the Civic Center. I'm a job coach with generally four to eight clients. We started as a seasonal job out there during the hockey season and figure skating and curling. And it's gotten to be where the tasks that are needed out there, we've been able to meet those quite well. And so it's gotten to work into a Monday through Friday, anywhere from two to four hours a day with that clientele. Some of the jobs that we do out there are dryland events, all the drylands preparation is set up for those, janitorial, vacuuming, glass cleaning, bathroom garbage, ground cleanup. And then special events like sunshine, soldier funerals, we've helped set up for those. The hockey season is still a large part of our prep, getting the games on the ice and boards ready and locker rooms cleaned. And we've gotten a lot of good comments from the other teams in the conference stating how well the facility looks in the locker rooms. Special events other than that, we just got done with the Ridgewater College graduation setup. We set up about 1,000 chairs and do the garbage and cleanup after that, sweeping, the bleacher cleanup. Also, we help out with the camper shows and a little bit with the West Central Tribune rummy sale. I wasn't expected to be here tonight. My boss had an unexpected medical, family medical emergency down in Rochester, so he asked me to be, so you kind of bear with me with these quick notes here and everything. But the MINDAC Award is why I'm here tonight, and it's to be presented to Kevin Matson. And I can just tell you a little bit about MINDAC. It's the old acronym. MINDAC is for the Minnesota Day Activities Centers. And right now, what it is, it's the advocacy organization for organizations that provide service to, services to people with disabilities in the community. The distinguished service award recognizes people, businesses, that provide the opportunity for the employment for people with disabilities who do good things for these individuals. And tonight, we are here to thank the city of Wilmer for letting us have this opportunity to carry on this, which has been taking place for about 12 years now. And Civic Center staff and especially Kevin Matson. Where this award originated was, they give one whoever's deserving, it could be more than one in Minnesota, but we have our accreditation that comes through both state and national accreditation every three years. And we started talking and they've seen our visits out there. They go out there and visit with us. And I, you know, I said, you know, are there any awards for something like this? And they thought, they just can't believe how well this is carried out with Kevin and that out there. And they said, sure enough, there's this MINDAC award. So we applied for it, and hands down, Kevin got it. And so we're, like I said, letting us have this opportunity, helping the city. It's for Kevin, but it's also for everybody here also. We'd like to thank him for the employer for people with disabilities, for his efforts and commitment in helping our individuals by providing the opportunity for employment. And again, like I said, this distinguished service award recognizes people, businesses, that provide the opportunity for employment for people with disabilities and people who are doing good things for these individuals. And some of these people, the hockey teams that come out there, they know these guys by name, the city, the public works people, they come out there, they know them. And it's just been a great, great cooperation between the city and Wilmer, a good deal. And for a lot of these people, these have been life-enhancing opportunities to be able to work out in the community. So at this time, I feel very honored and privileged to be able to present this award to the MINDAC distinguished service award presented in recognition of distinguished services to people with developmental disabilities, to Kevin Matson, Wilmer Civic Center, Crossroads DT&amp;H for 2013.
Thank you very much.
Steve, can I, can I speak? He usually puts me on the very last of our staff meetings when there's only two minutes left because he knows I'm a little windy. And I can't believe that, right, Charlie? But, Mr. Mayor and council, I'm so glad that Lee mentioned that this award is for the city and all of us here, not just for me, because that's what I wanted to say. And he said it for me so well. And if I could describe our partnership with the Crossroads group that we have there, it's just, it's like, like a professional baseball team. The workers are the players. Lee is the third base coach. I'm the manager. Steve is the general manager, and you all are the owners. And as the manager, I can report to you that we have a real winning team. And every once in a while, we hit a home run. In fact, we did that just this past weekend when we had Ridgewater commencement ceremonies there. That's a big setup with all 1,600 to 1,700 chairs and the bleachers and all of that kind of thing. And it just takes manpower to do those kinds of things and to be ready for it. And Lee, I can send my thank you from the Ridgewater administration for the great job you did. They told me specifically to tell you that tonight. So they did a great job. But that's just one example of what we call on the Crossroads to do besides many, many other things. So I recall in my file a letter that I had with the Crossroads group. It was from, wasn't from an individual here in Wilmer or us as an employer, but another organization. But the letter was from the client, and it said, "Thank you for, thank you for not judging me because of my disability. Thank you for supporting me so that I learn more on my job and become a better person. Thank you for treating me like you would want to be treated." I'll never forget that little letter. And it kind of speaks to what we all know, that in our upbringing, we strive to take care of those who are less fortunate by no fault of their own. And so in this way, we perform our obligation, and the city of Wilmer does that very well with this program. So I'm very proud of that. So thank you very much. This is for all of us. So I'll hang it in my office, and you can stop by and take a look at it too sometime. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for all that you do. I can't think of anyone that would be more deserving of that award than Kevin. Thank you again for everything that you do, Kevin. Right now, we'll move into the presentation by Mr. Stiff and Family Promise of Candy Ojai County.
Councilmembers and audience, thank you for having us. I'm Roy Stiff of Candy Comp and of the United Methodist Church here in Wilmer. And I'd like to introduce Susan Cafferty. Susan Cafferty is our coordinated care facilitar at the church, and she's also on the board at Family Promise. And she is a great partner, and she'll begin the presentation about Family Promise of Candy Ojai County.
Thank you, Roy, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here representing Family Promise of Candy Ojai County, which is a brand-new organization that's under development at this time. And I'm just going to begin by giving you a little bit of history surrounding how we got our start. Homelessness is a growing problem in the United States, in Minnesota, and also locally here in Candy Ojai County. Currently, at this moment in time, there are more than 600,000 people who are homeless in the United States of America. Unfortunately, families with children represent a rapidly growing segment of the homeless population. In January of this year, a survey was taken in southwestern Minnesota. At approximately, at that time, approximately 124 homeless households were present in southwestern Minnesota. And that included families that were what we call doubled up, which means that they're staying with friends, staying with relatives, doing an operation which we call couch hopping, which means that you stay with one person until their landlord or their relatives get tired of having you around, and then you hop to another friend or relative and stay there as, as long as you can, and then to another place, and to another, and so forth. In addition to the couch hoppers, there are a good many people in this county, even in the wintertime, who are living and sleeping in their cars. Think about that. 20 below zero, the wind blowing, and you're sleeping in the back of your car. Think about how unpleasant that would be, what a terrible night's sleep that would give you, how poorly it would prepare you for work or school the next day. Of the 124 homeless households in southwestern Minnesota at any given time, approximately 68 of those households are households with children. And in our county alone, approximately 36 households are families or individuals who are homeless, doubled up, sleeping in their cars, looking for a place to stay. Because of this problem, well over a year ago, a group of concerned citizens and social service organizations started meeting to talk about the problem of homelessness in Candy Ojai County. We called ourselves a task force, the Candy Ojai County Homeless Task Force. And as a result of those meetings, we decided to try and run two different programs for homeless individuals within our county. The first one is a relatively simple program called Safe Harbors. And that is a program that brings out long-term leases on motel rooms to provide emergency shelter for adults without children. The second program is a little bit more complicated. It's called Family Promise of Candy Ojai County. And that's what I'm here to talk with you about this evening. Family Promise of Candy Ojai County is an interfaith hospitality network, or an IHN, if you will. And what that means is that communities of faith are brought together to try and help homeless families with children, to try and help them find more permanent solutions to the problems that are associated with homelessness. Communities of faith are actually ideal places to help homeless families. We can do it in a manner that's cost-effective, that helps families stay together rather than being split up and sent to various different shelters. And it also provides the citizens of our community... And it also provides the citizens of our community with exposure to the problems of homelessness, helps us understand some of the issues that arise, and helps us to directly be involved in helping homeless families. Since I work for a church and I belong to a church, I can tell you that I feel very strongly that helping families that are homeless in our community, it's part of our church's And I know that there are many communities of faith in this county that feel the same way. Family Promise of Candy Ojai County is not a brand new organization that's trying to figure out what to do about homeless families on its own. It's part of a nationwide organization. The National Family Promise Network has been in operation for over twenty-five years. They have a hundred and eighty affiliates across the United States. So we're not reinventing a wheel here. We're picking up a program that has been working for twenty-five years and becoming a part of that program and bringing that program to Candy Ojai County. Family Promise serves, again, families with children. And we are joining a group of cities in Minnesota who have Family Promise programs that are already up and running. And those cities include Rochester, Anoka, and Mankato. And I would comment specifically that the program in Rochester has been operating now for twenty years, so it's been highly successful. We anticipate serving up to four homeless families at a time with the Family Promise program here in Candy Ojai County. And this is how it works. Let's begin on a Sunday evening. Sunday evening about supper time, our homeless families come to our church. Our volunteers are there to meet them, to give them a warm welcome, and we sit down and have supper together, all of us together. In the evening after supper, we may have a game for the children, or we may see a movie. And then when it's time to go to sleep, the beds that Family Promise owns are brought out, set up for each family in a private area, and volunteers spend the night at the church with the families. In the morning, then, when we wake up, it's time to prepare a continental breakfast for all of the volunteers who have stayed overnight and the families as well. We pack a bag lunch for all of our family members, and then send them off for the day to school if they're school-aged children, or to a place called the Day Center if they're adults or very young children. At the end of the day, the families then come back to our church, and we start the process over again. Families stay at our church for a week at a time, four times a year. So our church anticipates serving four weeks out of the year as the Family Promise Host Congregation. We serve for a week at a time, and then the next Sunday, the families are transferred to the next church that also serves as a host congregation. So families stay at our church a week, and then they go to the next church where they stay a week, and then to the next church, and so on. And during the day, again, they spend time at the Day Center. What is a Day Center? A Day Center is, again, the place where the adults and the small children spend the day. And they don't just spend the day sitting around and waiting until supper time again. They spend the day working with the staff of Family Promise, and also with the computers and other resources that we have there at the Day Center, looking for things that they need, things like a job, training if they need training for a job, a cost-effective apartment or house to rent. In other words, they spend the day working on the solutions that will help them get over the issue of homelessness and re-enter their communities as people with a home and a job once again. The Day Centers are also places where our Family Promise program will have their showers for people to take their daily showers, and we'll also have our laundry facilities where everyone will keep their clothes and things clean and ready to go. So far, our Family Promise program has become incorporated in the state of Minnesota. We have an interim board of directors in place, and we are currently working on recruiting the host congregations that we will need to serve those four times a year, one week at a time, as well as support congregations. And these are usually congregations that are smaller or don't wish to make the commitment to become a host congregation, but they still have people who want to be involved. So our support congregations, we will look to for additional volunteers or funds as we need. So far, our host congregations, the ones that have made the commitment to becoming host congregations in Candy Ojai County include Savaya Lutheran Church, and I'm proud to say the United Methodist Church of Wilmer, Vingy Lutheran Church, Calvin Lutheran Church, and our newest host congregation just a few days ago that made this commitment, the Evangelical Covenant Church of New London. Ultimately, we are looking for thirteen host congregations that are willing to make the commitment for one year apiece. We have seventy-three communities of faith here in Candy Ojai County, so we are confident that those thirteen congregations will emerge. So far, we have our support congregations that have joined us, Salem Covenant Church and Unitarian Universalist Church, and others are in the decision-making process at this time. We are hoping that by the end of 2013, that we will have our thirteen host and support congregations in place, and that we will be ready to host homeless families. We're also busy looking for a Day Center, and we are looking at several different options. In some communities, they rent space from their local YMCA. I think it's probably more likely that we will rent an unused building or a home, or that we will buy a building or a home to use as a Day Center here in Candy Ojai County. We're looking at all the options at the current time. The benefits for our community are numerous. Homeless families will be able to rejoin the community, maintain their dignity, and be served and receive our friendship and our help in a family-like atmosphere. Our volunteers, again, become more aware of the problems of homelessness right here in Wilmer. There are spiritual gains for everyone who's involved in this program. And also, we will have a position of a full-time director of Family Promise in Candy Ojai County who will be a member of our community as well. These are the names of the people on our board of directors. I would suggest if questions occur to you once we're done here this evening, that you might want to call Sherman Schuler down in Savaya. He's the president of the interim board of Family Promise of Candy Ojai County. Or if you can't reach Sherman, you can always just call the United Methodist Church here in Wilmer, because I'm either there or else they know where I am pretty much all of the time. So if you have any questions, feel free at any time to call me. What are others saying about this program? I just have a couple of quotes here from some of the other affiliates across the United States. "Helping homeless families is not just about a place to sleep. It is holding the child, listening to the mother, smiling and connecting with people." A former guest from Idaho wrote, "You provided more than food, shelter, and transportation. There are encouraging and affirming words, laughter as you visited with us, and sometimes quiet when that was what we needed. You gave us time to gather our life back together." When I first learned I would be in a shelter, I automatically pictured a shelter. But what I found were caring and concerned people who made the darkest time in my life so much brighter. The help and guidance I received is beyond words. Family Promise is a program that we think will be a big plus for the people of Candy Ojai County. I've been personally very inspired by the work that I've been able to do in trying to get the program organized, and by the many, many people I met who have a deep concern for homeless individuals and homeless families right here in our community. I think we all can see that homelessness is a difficult problem, that many, many different steps will be needed to help the people who are affected by this issue, and Family Promise is one of those steps. I think I'll stop here, and Roy and I will answer questions if you have any.
I think what I'll do is throw it out to the audience first. Are there any questions from the audience? Was this young lady in, Roy?
Yeah, is there a limit of time that someone can be a guest?
We don't have a specific time limit. When guests come to the Family Promise program, they are interviewed by the director of the Family Promise program. There are certain people that we don't feel the program can help. For example, if there is a problem with active drug or alcohol use, I think that that is a family where the issues may be beyond the scope of our ability to provide answers. So issues like that, we would try and refer those people on for more sophisticated help, okay? Once someone is in the program, we don't have a specific time limit. The average family spends approximately sixty-two days in Family Promise, and that's two months. And when you think about all of the things that a homeless family might have to accomplish, finding an affordable place to live, getting their transportation lined up, maybe looking for a new job, sixty-two days actually gets it done pretty quickly. Approximately seventy percent of families that go through the Family Promise program complete the program, go on, and have a successful life in a community without becoming homeless again. And really, when you look at the success rate, if you will, of other programs, seventy percent is dramatically good. It's very high.
Thank you for the question. Are there any other questions? And I'll turn it over to the council and staff and see if they have any questions. Councilor Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for making us aware of this program. I was not aware of it until tonight. Are you in any way regulated by the government? Health, safety, food, or whatever? I mean, they seem to be on everybody's back these days. Do you have to follow some situation or some regulations also?
I don't know of specific government regulations that we're required to meet, but there are Family Promise regulations that we will be required to meet that will address some of those concerns. For example, when we start providing service to homeless families, our volunteers will have a training program to go through. We will train leaders from each host congregation, who will then go and train the members who will be volunteering. We also will be required to do background checks for volunteers. As far as the safety of things like food and that kind of thing, the churches will be required to provide the same safe food preparation and service that they provide for their own congregational dinners and that sort of thing. So I think that we will be able to provide safe and adequate service, yes, sir. And those things are very definitely foremost on the minds of the people who are organizing this program and also on the national organization. Would you like to add anything, Roy?
I would just add to that, that we have reported to us from other affiliates, Anoka and Rochester, as well as the words of the national organization, that our liability and our requirements of service are very similar to those of the local faith-based organizations or churches. So what one would expect of a church hosting a youth group or a mission group would be very similar to what one would expect of Family Promise hosting our guests during the time they're with us. So those are the regulations that we're aware of.
What about medical requirements, you know, shots for kids, or if somebody needs some medical attention, they have diabetes or something? Is the church responsible for that, or they'll see to that, or how do these people get helped from that?
Susan can answer a part of that. I can also say that part of the process for who is able to qualify for Family Promise is this weeding out process, the same process that lets us know if there are abuse issues in the family, or if there are chemical or criminal issues that may make a guest an unsafe choice for Family Promise, either for other residents or for the care providers. During that same weeding out process, we have an opportunity to determine those special issues, and the program administrator will have chief responsibility, will also be amenable to county human services and other agencies that we hope to be collaborating with. Would you like to add to that?
Yes, I think as far as the medical issues are concerned, again, they would be the same kinds of issues that a church would face with a mission group. First aid kits should be well-stocked, up to date, and in prominent locations. AED machines should be present, and definitely the quality assurance on those should be completed on a regular interval. Volunteers will be trained in basic first aid, and beyond that, we will plan on dialing 911.
Do you have a target date where you're actually going to start, or have you?
We are hoping to start by the end of 2013. And that will depend upon our ability to continue our process of recruiting host congregations, which we are doing.
And then... Since you're in a new chapter, then you just applied for 501(c)(3).
We did, yes.
Okay. And you'll be accepting donations through the churches, or is there an address or a phone number people can call for this, or?
Yes. At the current time, we have a post office box address. We also are accepting donations through our host congregations at this time. Once our 501(c)(3) is approved by the government, which we're anticipating soon, is that right, Sherman?
We're hoping soon, okay? Once that is approved, then we can receive donations directly.
You don't have Tea Party in the name or anything like that? Thank you.
No, sir, we do not.
Well-worth endeavor. I applaud you.
Did you have a comment?
I do. Thank you both for coming. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
If you come across veterans, I know we have a lot of veterans who are homeless. VA in Minnesota has a tremendous program for homeless vets. We know that many of them, that's a lifestyle that they choose, and so there's a lot of psychological work that needs to be done with them, and we have great counseling. So I'd encourage you, if you come across a veteran that is looking for help, to contact our county veteran service officer, who is Tricia Appeldorn, 231-6226. And I'm sure she would, we have a program out of Mankato, it's called MACV, and it's primarily for veterans and family members. So we have a good program in Minnesota. And I believe Senator Klobuchar is also very active in that, and some of her folks.
Could you repeat that phone number again?
Repeat the name and number, please, sir.
Tricia Appeldorn.
Appeldorn?
Appeldorn, right. She's the County, Candy Ojai County Veteran Service Officer, and her number is 231-6226.
Thank you very much for that information. We really appreciate it, and we hope that we will be able to bring back updates to the council as our progress continues.
Are there any other comments or questions, Councilor Lam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan, good to see you. Roy, thank you for your work to this point, that you've done to this point. I'm excited to see how this progresses. And my biggest concern, of course, is what can we do as a city to help you? What would you like us to do, and how can we assist you in your productive goals that you're about to take on?
Well, there are two things you can do. First, continue to tell others about Family Promise of Candy Ojai County. And secondly, once we get up and going, volunteer.
Also, your group of volunteers, I'm sure this just didn't happen overnight. You must have been working on it for quite a while. And I just want to say thank you to the churches that have participated in... to the churches that have participated, and they should be congratulated also for using their facilities. They're obligating themselves to use their facility and their volunteers, but also just doing the work of the Christian mission.
Yes.
And they should be applauded. I hope it works.
And I think I should say that Family Promise of Candy Ojai County is joining several interfaith programs that are actively working here within our county. And one of them that comes to my mind is our Community Meal Program, which is very active here in Wilmer, and is joined by the Tuesdays Table Program in New London Spicer Area. And those are programs that provide free meals for anyone who would like to come and join us. And so, I will issue an invitation. The United Methodist Church is hosting the Community Meal come this Sunday at 6:00 PM. You're all invited to join us for dinner. Thank you.
No charge.
I have several requests to make of the mayor and council members on behalf of Family Promise. One is that you'll spread the word to your own churches and faith-based organizations that we are in existence and that we're getting on board rapidly, given the timeframe we have. Please spread the word to your congregations and encourage them to contact us about becoming either a host church or a support church with volunteers and funding. You know, most of our churches are ideally set to be host churches, just as they are. We have Sunday School classes that aren't in use most of the week. We have fellowship halls with kitchens, and we do our funerals and our weddings and our things there. And think about not how often these facilities are used, but how often during the week they're not used. And think about the heritage of Christian service, as you pointed out, Councilman. It really becomes a privilege of service to extend what we do one day a week, sometimes to what we do often and deliberately. So, I do ask you to bring the word back to your churches and faith-based organizations. The second thing is to thank you for the privilege of being on board with us as far as zoning is concerned. I need to take a moment of personal privilege and thank Bruce and all of you council members for when Candy Camp was getting started. You remember that? It's almost a decade ago now. And we started out in a house, and zoning issues were present, and being appropriate in the community was present, and maintaining community values and the value of properties was present, and you really walked us through that process with integrity. And it was a learning experience for us, and it was a privilege to find out that our city does things right when it comes to the considerations related to zoning, to property values, and to the values of the community. So, here we are imposing ourselves on you in a manner of speaking, and we want to do this right. As we go through the process of locating a day center, for instance, we would like council and zoning input to make sure that we don't have to backtrack and make up for some deficit in our judgment. So, we'd like you to be on board with us for that. If you're aware of appropriate properties, please say something to me personally. You can always find me at Candy Camp. I'm just always there. Keep us in touch with what in the community is out there. And we also are aware that we need to be in touch with human services. We need to be collaborating and coordinating with human services. We're going to serve maybe four families out of that average 36 that you saw on the screen. So many won't qualify. There'll be single persons, or there'll be children without parents, or what have you. And it's almost heartbreaking how many we can't serve, but those we can, we want to do it right. And so, we need to be talking together. So, I request just that we keep one another in the loop for what opportunities to serve are out there and that we do this right first time.
Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members.
I had one question, if I may, like Colombo says, just one more thing.
About one more thing, seriously, the hint's been already told, too.
Where do you find these people? Where do they come forward? I mean, are you, do you look into the bridges or in the cars at Walmart or what? I mean?
I can speak to that. One of my jobs at the United Methodist Church is to run our assistance program, and people come to our church or call our number on a regular basis with this problem of homelessness. Just, it was, excuse me, Friday of this past week, I was taking a day off of work, and I was at home actually cleaning my kitchen floor, when I got a call from the church that said, "There's a lady here, and she and her children are homeless." And they were hoping, they were hoping to get shelter, and she named the shelter where they were hoping, but that shelter was full. Could we help them for the weekend until a space became available? And that's what we did. We provided, and that's what we can provide usually, is one or two nights in a motel room. That's what our assistance program can provide.
Okay.
Not any ways near good enough.
I have to add to that, if I may. One of the unique characteristics of homelessness in this part of the state is that we largely know one another, don't we? To a degree, we know our neighbor. And so, when our neighbor is going through difficult times, when we're going through difficult times, it's often our nature to hide it, because we are a community that knows one another. Makes it difficult to know when there's a person who needs help, because pride gets in the way, dignity gets in the way. It makes it difficult to come forward. And so, one of the things that suggests Family Promise as a good, a good method of outreach to homeless persons is if we can convey the value that we are faith-based people who honor one another's dignity, and that we recognize that homelessness is not about deficient human beings. It's about all human beings being faced with difficult circumstances and times and the stuff that happens, all human beings going through stresses that can be damning. And we're there to reach out to one another during those times. So, Family Promise, I hope, will convey a faith-based value of the dignity of persons and the privilege of reaching out to our brothers and sisters when there's need. And hopefully, we can lift some of that stigma.
Thank you. Thank you again. Do we have anything for?
There are two individuals signed up. If you'd like, I can read their names. Catherine Johnson and Mr. Lauren Lucian have both signed up to speak under open forum.
Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mary Annish and members of the council. My name is Catherine Johnson, and I am a citizen of Wilmer. I live on 8th Avenue Southeast, a couple doors down from my councilman, Mr. Rick Fagerley. And I am the chairperson of the Wilmer Community and Activity Centers Council. I've been on the council for almost four years now. And I recently wrote an email to my councilman expressing my support of hiring a custodial position to care for the center and to keep it in good repair and to keep it clean versus the current system of having a cleaning crew or a cleaning service in place. And I wanted to say thank you to the Labor Relations Committee for approving the hiring of a custodian for the center, and I wish, or I hope that tonight, that the council also approves a custodian being hired. And that's basically it.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thanks.
Are there any questions for this young lady? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. My name is Lauren Lucian, and I live out not far from Mr. Fagerley either, on 9th Avenue Southeast. He's my councilperson, and I guess Mr. Omen is too. So, I kind of second what Kathy did. I'm a member of the Wilmer Community Center Board out there for almost four years, and I kind of work with the finance and committee and maintenance part of it. And I just want to make a few more points on it that, first of all, through rentals and so forth, we serve over 22,000 people out there. I have records of that for five years. And also, that's not including the walk-in people that come in every day to play pool, play cards, use the exercise equipment, maybe use the computers. There's a library there. There's a wood shop, which are kind of in the process of trying to rehab that thing a little bit. So, there's a lot of people that come in there and use that facility just to socialize. Actually, no, I'm a Lion member. We meet there. I can hear them back there playing cards every Wednesday afternoon. So, they're having a good time, and it's a good social thing for our seniors and retired people. I'm one of them. I'm retired. And then, of course, it's an older building, and there's a lot of traffic that goes through that building. And of course, that takes, you know, when you clean, just like you clean your house, you know, you find things you've got to go back and fix. Well, the cleaning contract can only clean. We need a custodian person, because there's other things that need to be done, fixing minor things rather than calling somebody in all the time. And of course, the other thing is that there's rentals to set up for. We had a thousand and some rentals last year, and so, we had to move chairs and move things around and do that type of thing. So, there are things, changing light bulbs and that type of thing, just routine things that a handy person can really do besides keep the place clean and looking nice. So, I thank you for your support, and I look forward to further support tonight by the council. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for either of these folks? Thank you again. We'll go into the Finance Committee report for May 13, 2013. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was a public comment, and there was no one there for comment. The next item was Rice Hospital, first quarter financial report, and staff explained that the representatives from Rice Hospital weren't able to attend the meeting due to a conflict, and they're going to be rescheduled for a future Finance Committee meeting. Fourth item on the agenda was a waste treatment rate discussion. Kathy Aho, who we heard from earlier here this evening of Springstead, presented the committee the revised waste treatment rate study reflecting a proposed start date of July 1, 2013. At the last Finance Committee meeting, it was suggested to increase the meter charges by a dollar per meter in an effort to see a more stable revenue source. Ms. Aho explained that she reviewed that option but found it would only provide an additional $100,000 annually. Since the increase was minimal, the higher rate meter charge was not incorporated into the revised study. And after a lengthy discussion on the part of the committee, it was a consensus of the committee that maybe Springstead should once again rework the waste treatment rates by incorporating a more significant increase of $10 to $15 per meter charge, along with an adjustment to the Tier 1 and Tier 2 volume rates so as not to disproportionately impact one group of users. The latest revisions of the rate structure will be brought back to a Finance Committee meeting later. And I would also say that we're going to have a work session for reflecting the budget, but I think we will also have some time to talk about the rate study, and that'll be on June 3. So, if you remember that, and we'll talk about that, the budget calendar as well. But June 3, we're going to talk about the rate study again. So, that was all for information at this particular time. The next item was the 2014 budget calendar. Staff reviewed the proposed 2014 budget calendar. A few of the dates noted included the development of capital improvement program items submitted by May 24. Peer review, May 24 through June 7. Completed department head's estimates must be returned and reviewed by the city administrator in June. The Planning Commission will review the capital improvements program in July. The mayor will be meeting with the city administrator and finance director also in July. Notices will be published in the newspaper in July. The mayor will present his proposed budget to the Finance Committee during our first Finance Committee meeting in August. That will also be like a work session, so all council members will be able to participate. And I had suggested that maybe we look at a facilities plan be developed for, as well as the capital improvement program. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce a motion approving the 2014 budget calendar as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the 2014 budget calendar as presented. Is there any discussion?
I have one comment, if I may. Again, I want to emphasize that the June 3, our next city council meeting, we're going to be starting at 6 o'clock, will be talking about the budget, and that's a time when council members can give the mayor their insights and suggestions as to, you know, some generalities or some specifics, if you want. That's a time to do it. If you're not comfortable doing that, you can also submit your thoughts to the mayor, but we need those submitted by mid-June so that the mayor and staff have an adequate time to put the budget together. So, just a reminder on that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Our next item, we talked about future agenda items, and we'll be looking at the seven-year local option sales tax. Probably that'll be the final report, the airport project report, and the waste treatment plant report. Under old business, this was an item that had been brought up previously. Staff informed us that the city clerk had scheduled a meeting for, would have been last week, with Brummer Bank regarding the possibility of the city receiving 2.6% interest on funds deposited there, and that's similar to what the library in the county has, have done. That's for information, and I suspect that we'll be getting a report on that at a future council, or Finance Committee meeting. Under new business, there was no new business. So, unless there are questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for May 13, 2013. Is there any discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move into the Public Works, Safety Committee report. Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one had to do with the consideration of establishing an on-sale brewer taproom license category. Staff presented a request to create a new category for liquor license for brewer taprooms. The current city ordinance does not allow for this type of establishment, and it also requires a significant food sales. A taproom would not be required to meet the food requirements. Mr. Nick Davis, a local beer aficionado, spoke in support of the ordinance change and saw it as an economic development effort. Our zoning ordinance currently does not provide for brewer taprooms in any zoning district. If the new license category is created, the Planning Commission will need to study the matter and amend the zoning ordinance. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I'll introduce the motion to direct the city attorney, in consultation with the police chief, to draft an ordinance amendment to create this licensing provision for brewer taprooms.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
A motion has been made and seconded to direct the city attorney, in consultation with the police chief, to draft an ordinance amendment to create licensing provisions for brewer taprooms. Is there any discussion on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you explain what that is? Do they make their own beer?
That's what I understand.
They make their own beer. There's several, what do you call them, tap breweries down in Minneapolis, downtown, St. Paul, where they serve only their own beer. And you can go in, you can see their vats, and, you know, maybe Mr. Peterson could expand on that. He explained it very well at the committee meeting.
Could you explain, Mr. Peterson, also the fact of what the ordinance is now requiring food?
Okay. I'll start with that question first, Mr. Mayor. Our current liquor ordinance requires that a liquor license be granted to establishments that serve a significant amount of food, and that's defined in the ordinance and in relationship to the provision of alcohol. A taproom would not- A taproom would not be expected to meet that obligation, because they are nothing more than a place where you go to a small brewery, typically called a microbrewery, and can sample the beers that are produced on premise, again, on those premises. It's, it's limited to that premise, and only to the beer that's produced there. So, that's my understanding of the concept and of our current ordinance.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
It did, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number two had to do with consideration of a request for municipal water service by Arnold's of Wilmer. Staff presented a request by Arnold's of Wilmer to allow the extension of municipal water service to their property outside the city limits solely for the purpose of providing watering for a fire sprinkler system. Mr. John Arnold said the request was the best solution to the fire sprinkler requirement for their proposed expansion. Current policy does not provide for the extension of municipal utilities beyond the city limits. We discussed current policy and its relationship to the comprehensive plan and urban growth boundaries. Comments from the city engineer and municipal utilities were requested. Motion was made, seconded and passed, but I've been informed that we need to table this motion, or this, this issue, and send it back to committee for a further discussion. Do I have a motion to table? Second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to table this item and send it back to committee?
We have a motion and a second to table the motion, or to table the recommendation and send it back to committee. Is there any discussion on that? Councilman Anderson.
I don't know what the timeline is for, for the company to do this work. Is that going to present any, any problem if we're, if we're going to hold them up a few more weeks?
The company is doing advanced planning for 2014 construction.
Oh, okay.
May I ask what, what the reason is for holding this up?
The committee asked for some staff input from the city engineer and, and Wilmer Municipal Utilities, you know, and was going, was considering approving this contingent upon that information from the city engineer and Wilmer Municipal Utilities. In our initial conversations, the utilities and city engineers have some concern about this project, and I think it would be better that that discussion happened again at the Public Works for Look Safety, so they can make their recommendation based upon that information, having that full information.
Thank you very much.
Rather than act upon it and then potentially have a change of opinion based upon that information. So we thought it would just be better to bring it back to the committee.
So we have a motion on the table to...
Table.
To table.
To table and send it back to committee.
Send it back to committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number three was the consideration of change order number one to the Western Interceptor contract. The council previously authorized Donahue and Associates to complete the design and contract amendment documents for the construction of the airport. L.S. Sewer to include change order number one as an amendment to the contract with Geislinger and Sons, Inc., for the work. The contract quantities and pricing associated with this work amounted $238,251.25. Donahue and staff recommend executing the change order to complete the construction. A motion is made by, made, seconded and passed after some discussion for the following, and I will introduce the motion to approve change order number one to project number 1110 in the amount of $238,251.25, and authorize the city administrator to execute the document. This is a resolution.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the change order number one to project number 1110 in the amount of $238,251.25, and authorize the city administrator to execute the document. Is there any discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's a big amount of money. How are we going to, where, where's that going to come from?
Ms., I'm going to let Mr. Peterson answer that for you.
Because this sewer line will serve undeveloped properties or unserved properties that were formerly part of the Wilmer Municipal Airport, this, this part of the project would be funded by local option sales tax dollars. Additionally, by the elimination of the lift station, which we should see some maintenance and operations costs decrease in the future as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that carries.
Our fourth item was to consider an amendment number two to the Donahue contract for Western Interceptor Engineering Services. With the approval of change order number one to the Western Interceptor project number 1110, construction services are needed to complete this work. The city currently is under contract with Donahue and Associates for the project. A contract amendment to provide the additional professional fees, excuse me, professional services was provided in the amount of $23,620. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the contract amendment with Donahue and Associates in the amount of $23,620, and authorize our mayor and city administrator to execute the document.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract amendment with Donahue and Associates in the amount of $23,620, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document. Now are there any discussion? I have a question for the city administrator. Is that totally paid for out of the local option sales taxes, I understand? Do I understand that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries.
Our fifth item was to approve plans and specs and advertisement for bids for the Robins Island to Bridge Trail Project number 1304. Plans and specs have been prepared by Bowleg, Inc., for the improvement of the trail from First Street to Robins Island, and approved by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Staff is recommending approval and authorization to advertise for bids to be opened on June 18th, 2013. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following resolution, and I will introduce it, to approve plans and specs for project number 1304 and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened June 18th, 2013.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for project number 1304 and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened June 18th, 2013. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries.
Our sixth item had to do with the discussion of parking issues, Wilmer Avenue businesses slash facilities, and this was for information only. We briefly discussed ongoing issues with parking in the areas of Wilmer Avenue, Atlanta Street Southeast, and Wilmer Avenue and Fourth Street Southwest. Both locations have busy institutions adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Our chief police said no safety issues have been identified at those locations, and Councilmember Nelson stated that the visibility is sometimes a problem, and asked if maybe additional yellow curbing could be provided to keep vehicles back farther from the intersection. Again, that was for information only. Item number seven was to approve plans, specs, and advertise for bids for project number 1302-A, which is at Wilmer Avenue Southwest. The council has authorized the preparation of plans and specifications for improvements to Wilmer Avenue Southwest between 22nd Avenue Southwest and County State Aid Highway 5. The improvements include a new railroad crossing to accommodate a quiet zone. Once again, there was some discussion, and a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following resolution, which I will introduce, and that is to approve plans and specifications for project number 1302-A, and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened again on June 18th, 2013.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for project number 1302-A, and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened June 18th, 2013. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries.
Item number eight was to approve plans and specs for an advertisement for bids for project number 1302-B, which is Fourth Avenue Southwest. Again, the city council has authorized the preparation of plans and specifications for construction of a new street and utilities in Industrial Park. As requested by council, the project includes bid alternates for bituminous and concrete surfacing. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded for the, passed for the following resolution, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the plans and specs for this project number 1302-B, and authorize advertising for bids to be opened on June 18th, 2013.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for project number 1302, and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened June 18th, 2013. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That carries.
Our last item had to do with new business, and first, we had a report from our police chief, Mr. Weifels, providing a brief report on police activities in the last month. Also, Councilmember Ammon requested that the engineering department review street conditions on 7th Avenue from Lakeland Drive to 19th Street Southeast. He also requested that the Finance Committee discuss the issue of assessment policies for HRA and other similar properties that do not pay property taxes. And the last new business item was, I had spoken the need to the council for reopening discussion on contracting for street sweeping. If there are no questions, I will move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion, I'm sorry, Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to item number six, which is the no parking. And I want to speak to 11th Street Southeast. I've been contacted a number of times by the folks that live there. Let me remind the council that that's a 40 mile an hour speed zone on Wilmer Avenue. There is no crosswalk. The people who park take up space for the residential folks that have visitors. They park there for an eight-hour period of time. When, when we have snow, or we have things blowing around, that the street sweeper can't get to, the snowplow operator has to go back and clean it again. I really think that that particular, again, no crosswalk, and I know how, how difficult it is for children, especially children that ride school buses, they don't like for them to cross the street, so why would we want to allow adults who work at Bethesda to park south of Wilmer Avenue on 11th Street, and then walk across 11th Street to go to work there when there isn't a crosswalk? It's 40 mile an hour traffic. I think that we need to think about that, and I guess the question is, why hasn't Bethesda provided, doesn't provide adequate parking for their employees?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I've been commenting about that. I did call Bethesda regarding this, regarding this subject, and they have spoken with their employees, and some of them are visitors, some of them are contract employees that are parking there. They, they are aware of the situation, they have had received calls with that. I, I feel for the constituents there, but there's an awful lot of on-street parking, and my concern from a safety standpoint is that that parking be moved back on all of those streets there to allow for visibility. I think it's also necessary for people in this community to make sure they don't park on the same side of the street all the time. We have cars on the street, all the streets, the snowplows go by, people have to move their cars, the snowplows come back, or the residents clean the streets there. And in talking with Bethesda, that is something they have communicated to their staff, and in this particular situation, I think it is an, an issue there of people that are not following that, with that. But I think that issue applies all the way around, around Bethesda and a lot of other facilities in our community too. So I guess the question to me comes back of whether we're going to allow on-street parking. And I think that that issue applies lots of places. This is probably compounded some, as you mentioned, Mr. Dacken, by the speed that goes there, past there, but I don't know that we can resolve and just say, let's not have on-street parking either, so.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if I may, the, this item can be brought up under old business at the next meeting too, Jim, if you'd like to attend, and then we can talk about it some more.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I know Mr. Dacken encouraged these people to come, and I think it's been on the agenda a couple of times, so we can try again and see if somebody wants to come and make comment, but I think there, there are a lot of issues, or a lot of places where this issue actually happens, so.
Chief, I have to ask you, you've been aware of this, obviously, but would the yellow line or the yellow stripe being moved further back solve or antagonize the problem?
It would not antagonize it. It would open up the intersection a little bit wider, so when you pull up to the intersection, as you're looking into the street you are about to enter, you could see farther down the street. Let me rephrase that. It might antagonize it if the yellow lines on the curb were put back far enough, you could probably lose a parking stall, which could then be perceived as antagonizing the situation, because there's one less parking stall in that area, but other than that, it would not antagonize it.
Thank you. Good conversation, I think, for a committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Where do we leave off?
Financing the minutes.
Mr. Fagerly. Mr. Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number nine, having the Finance Committee discuss assessment policy for the HRA, we did that last fall. And you can't assess HRA. I mean, we do assess churches, the house of worship.
Right. There's an, there, we looked at that last year, and there's an agreement in place with the HRA for a payment in lieu of, and so, rather than an assessment, and you would have to modify and change that agreement, and the HRA would have to agree to that change as well.
I don't even know if they make a payment in lieu of taxes.
I'm not sure in all cases they do, Mr. Fagerly. It's been a year since we looked at it. I'd have to look at it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, you may be correct that they do not, so.
Okay, thank you.
But we did look at it a year ago. We can, if the Finance Committee wishes, we can bring that information back. I don't have it off the top of my head, I apologize.
Okay, moving into the...
We have to file.
You have to vote on.
Vote on filing the minutes.
On, file on, move on the minutes to...
Public Works.
Public Works.
A motion was made and seconded to file the minutes.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the public works minutes of May 14th, 2013. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Labor Relations Committee report for May 15th, 2013. Councilman Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Wednesday, May 15th, at this building, facility right here. Others included Mr. Yanis, our mayor, councilmembers Audrey Nelson, Rick Fagerly, Bruce DeBlick, consultant Richard Furzman, and the city administrator, Charlene Stevens. Councilmember Tim Johnson was absent at this time, he had other, other pressing issues. Other city councils, city staff presented, included Finance Director Mr. Olkens, Community Head and Rec Director Steve Presiden, Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson, Police Chief Dave Weifels, Director of Community Development and Planning Bruce Peterson, and there were also in attendance a lot of constituents. Item number one was, we called a meeting in order for 45. We asked, there were no public comments, and item number three was the organizational assessment that we've been along the waiting for. This is going to take some time to read, I hope to bear with me. Richard and Arena Furzman, Bremreier Furzman presented the council with, with a preliminary report of the organizational assessment. Mr. Furzman reviewed the process used, including interviews with all Mr. Furzman reviewed the process used, including interviews of all members of the council, forty-five staff interviews, focus groups of business, East Africans, Latinos, interviews with individual community members, and a survey completed by seventy-six members of city staff and council. Mr. Furman, Mr. Furzman reviewed the organizational strengths of a committed city council, dedicated staff, and examples of exceptional cooperation among city staff and departments. Mr. Furzman also discussed the concerns, including the organizational culture, leadership, lack of a clear future and vision, and city's structure of external and internal services. Ms. Furzman reviewed the results of the survey and how well the city performed in the areas of adaptability, mission, consistency, and employee involvement. Some council members provided feedback regarding the need for vision and goals and to move the organization forward. Other council members questioned the lack of vision and expressed concerns that only the negative has been reported. It was suggested that more community conversation was needed, as well as adherence to the Home Rule Charter. There was discussion regarding lack of trust and the effect on decision-making and productivity. Privatizing additional services was suggested. Mr. Furzman also reviewed two options for restructuring the areas of public works, planning, and engineering. Mr. Furzman reviewed one model that included an overall division director for external services, which would combine planning, engineering, public works, and facilities functions to a larger division or superdepartment, as well as include filling the vacant city engineer position, the surveying position, and creating new positions for GIS and facilities management. Mr. Furzman recommended that the facilities management potentially came, come as a promotion from public works. In this opinion, in this option, Mr. Furzman stated that the city engineer would not be a department director, but a front-line supervisor and have more opportunity to actually do engineering work in-house. Mr. Furzman presented a second option that was similar to the city's previous alignment of positions, but fully staffed the department, as well as adding facilities, maintenance, and environmental management. Mr. Furzman cautioned that in this model, the city would need to rely more on consulting engineers. The council discussed the two options, but no decision, decisions were made, and it was suggested to perhaps discuss it further in committee or at a future work session. Mr. Furzman stated that there was still additional scope of work to be completed, such as looking at internal services, succession planning, assessing, and underutilized county services. This matter was for information only. Item number three was the custodial maintenance position. Ms. Stevens stated that the contracted custodial services that have been tried for over a year at the following facilities, the Wilmer Community Activities Center, as we heard earlier in the testimony, the airport, public works, fire and wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Stevens stated that the cost of the service during the same period was fifty-one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars, and the service had not been satisfactory. Ms. Stevens stated staff had exhausted all remedies with the current vendor and additionally had contacted other vendors, and the potential cost of a new vendor was estimated to be forty-seven thousand dollars. Stevens stated that based upon the lack of cost savings and poor quality of service, the recommendation was to hire a custodian at the entry level range with estimated costs of thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars to forty-five thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Mr. Merle Knutson of the Wilmer Community Activities Center Advisory Board addressed the committee regarding concerns for the service level at the WCAC and the current vendor and stated support for hiring a custodial position. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to hire a custodial, a custodian at the range level, the range one level, and the motion was carried. Mr. Pat Curry, I would move the recommendation of the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded by the council, by, I'm sorry, has been made and seconded to hire a custodian at the range one level. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Other items of interest were, Mr. Pat Curry addressed the committee, said that he thought the city council and the city administrator were doing a good job. There be no further business, meeting is adjourned at seven PM, and I will file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a correction, it's Earl Knutson, not Merle.
Thank you. Sorry, apologize for that, we'll get that corrected.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And the next item is a consideration of an ordinance amending Wilmer zoning ordinance relating to garage door height. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. For some time, the planning commission has been discussing the issue of garage sizes or secondary storage building sizes and door heights. Our ordinance has been a little bit difficult to administer because we allow for a building that can house quite a large vehicle, but we've never provided the door height to enable it to happen. In fact, our ordinance provides for two-story detached garages, and, you know, we've had several built over the years, but they've all complied with a ten-foot door height, which quite frankly is inadequate to get in some of the trailers and the motorhomes that we're really trying to get into these structures to shield them from public view. So the planning commission discussed it at length and is now recommending an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would allow the maximum door height to be increased from ten feet to twelve feet. And staff would recommend that the ordinance be introduced for a text amendment and that the ordinance have a public hearing held on June third.
So move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the ordinance to a public hearing on June third, to move the garage door openings from ten feet to twelve feet.
Yes.
And any discussion on that? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the lines of this housing a motorhome or a trailer, if an individual were to purchase an empty lot in Wilmer, and he wanted to first build, put a building up to house his motorhome or trailer, and then maybe build the house in three, four, five years, is that allowed?
Under our current ordinance, it is not.
It is not, and because?
Our ordinance requires that the principal structure be constructed ahead of any secondary structure or detached structure. If you came in and applied for the permit simultaneously, you could put the detached structure up first, but you would have to begin construction of the principal structure within a year and demonstrate progress on that. So you could get the cart a little bit ahead of the horse, but it would at least be a manageable situation because you'd have both, both structures being permitted concurrently.
And then there's, is there a size limit on this building? If it's detached, you know, you have your home there, and the lot's big enough to have a building like that? Is there a size limit on that building?
Currently, the maximum allowed is one thousand square feet.
A thousand square feet?
Yes.
Ten by a hundred?
Yeah. We get a lot of requests for twenty-six by forty, which is a thousand forty square feet. We actually allow those.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bruce. Is there any, let's see, where did we leave off on this?
There was a motion and a second, and you were at discussion.
No, no, no. We need to vote on that, setting the meeting for June third.
Setting the hearing.
For the garage door heights. The garage doors.
Oh, for the ordinance. Consideration of the ordinance amending the Wilmer zoning ordinance relating to garage door height from ten feet to twelve feet. Set it for June third, the hearing?
Right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries, thank you. Any old business to consider? About new business?
Councilmember Dacken had requested to speak on Memorial Day.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, next Monday is Memorial Day, and I want to start with Saturday, the twenty-fifth. The flags will go up at the Flags of Honor site, weather permitting, at seven o'clock. And we will also need, potentially for the twenty-seventh, which is Memorial Day, in case it rains or we have bad weather, we need to be able to use the Wilmer War Memorial Auditorium as a fallback area. And also, we'll need some police assistance along Gordon Avenue at Fairview Cemetery and up near the West Central Steel. West Central Steel? Yeah, West Central Steel. We're going to have some parking available up there, so there'll probably be a lot of vehicle traffic from about that point down to Little Crow Trail, County Road Five, so. But we've been working with both Fairview and the Kelvry Cemetery, and we think we have a better plan this year, but we will need some help.
Have you spoken with the city administrator on that?
I'm doing it right now. So anyhow, we just, our joint Veterans Council is very appreciative of everything that you do. We have a final meeting this Thursday, the twenty-third, and we'll finalize things, and we're hoping that we're going to have nice weather, and a lot of folks usually show up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further old business? New business? I have one that I will be sending a white paper and the option C to Mr. Furman, and I would like to see the comments by all the council people. Now, I have to ask Mr. Scott, what's the best way to handle that? I'll put you on the spot.
As an item of new business, I mean, I think you can make your comment and open it up for feedback from the council. I think that would be appropriate.
I, just to clarify that, I don't necessarily need this for this, this council meeting. Can we do it for a later council meeting?
Certainly.
And how do I do it first?
Yeah, I guess the recommendation would be, if you have something you'd like the council to consider, to distribute it before the next meeting or whatever meeting you'd like to discuss it.
I will do that. Thank you very much. At this time, if there's no further new business, Councilman Ammon?
One other comment, we talked about old business, and I'm sorry, I should have maybe asked for permission to speak, but I, I move that we take action on, move that the city council formally take progressive steps to assist locating a business to purchase the Molnar property and to market the employment of those eighty lost professional skilled people.
I'll second it for discussion. Councilman Nelson?
Isn't this already, I, I'm not sure how this is coming up at the end of the meeting, but I think it was brought up at a, at a committee meeting and asked for research, and I think you're still waiting for that research, are you not? Mr. Ammon?
Yeah, I asked for the fiscal impact from Steve Reinhuest on how this affects the city and the county and the school district, all the tax jurisdictions and the communities. But there's one, one issue that we have, we seem to be always bypassing and not really clarifying, and that's the issue of the people and the families and the jobs that are lost. And I know that, again, I'm not faulting anybody, but there is no action plan with the EDC and the business retention policy. There is no written policy. I've talked with Mr. Reinhuest. He said he could definitely be, work on one. I think we should have a policy in place for that. Also, in the meantime, we, we got eighty people that are unemployed. And I think rather than just looking at recruiting and helping new businesses, we also have to look at helping the people that lost their job, and we should have an action plan for that. We should be contacting, first of all, the manufacturers corporations of America, finding out which companies are looking to advance, which ones are looking to maybe purchase a building. We have all that equipment sitting in the building, in a few months, it could be gone. And we're going to lose all these people, maybe to who knows what type of a job, unemployment, extended unemployment, or working at Burger King or McDonald's. And it's not acceptable. I know that we're limited in what we can do as a council and how we can impact business, but I'd like to work with them and see if we can come up with a written policy on how to deal not only with the businesses, but to deal with the job loss of those individuals and their jobs. I think that's our role as, as a city, to look at both sides and both issues. And I have addressed one portion of it with the business impact of it, of what we can do as far as setting a policy and what we're limited, or what we can afford to help with abatement or whatever fiscal measures we can to keep them in the community. But we also have to deal with the reality, and that is businesses will make the decision to move regardless of what you throw on the table for them. And that's an impact to our community with the job loss, and I think we need to look at both sides so that we're covered and we have an action plan for our constituents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson, or, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, but.
Thank you.
He was trying to get your attention.
Could you tell me exactly what that motion is again? Would you reword, would you word that for me again?
I think Audrey probably could repeat it. I kind of ad libbed that one.
Yeah.
It could be better clarified, but I, I think the gist of it is that we, we, as a council.
Take action to create steps to assist businesses that go, go out of business and relocate, and then to assist the people who have lost their jobs.
Okay. I have a little bit of a concern. We have, you know, a joint and city economic development commission with a, with a director and another staff person and then another one that works on the ag things. I wonder if that wouldn't fit under, under their purview, rather than us trying to jump in and fix something when, when that's what they do. So I, I would rather see that stay with the EDC.
I, I agree that that's the final direction that it should be going. What I wanted to do is, with this motion, is to get the clarification, understanding from this council that they support more in that direction to adopt that type, that type of a policy. From there, I, my, my long-range plan of this would be to, on both issues of job, job, refining jobs for those individuals or finding a manufacturing company that's willing to hire these individuals or relocate them, or even keep them here and use existing facilities and work with the current, the current owner of the property, to see if there's interest in another firm purchasing that, or if there's any local investors that will want to take a venture into a new type of, new type of business. We have a lot, a lot, a lot of good local business people who might be interested in that also. That should be marketed. That should be marketed by our city, city staff, ourselves, and the EDC. My ultimate goal here is to have the big picture of this whole thing, Mr. Anderson, is that when something like this happens, we're going to be covered on all bases. So eventually, I'd like to get the consensus of the city council to say, yes, we do want the EDC to move forward with that type of a policy and implement a plan, but also get the direction from the city council here and the input from the city council, so that we can also get the input from the county commissioners, and we can also get a hold of all the other tax and jurisdictions, so we know where we sit. When something like this happens, what are we willing to give up? What can we do? But until those taxing jurisdictions meet, we can't really establish a real good policy and give direction to staff to go out and go after the company that might be living or is thinking about living or maybe wants to come here. So we need some focus on that. That's the general overextended vocabulary I have on the issue.
If I may, I, I understand the gist, but one thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is that we're. is that we're almost making it seem like maybe somebody didn't do what they should have done.
Oh, no.
The EDC didn't. And they put forward and put forth proposals to do that.
Yes.
And I think we heard a few weeks ago that it's pretty hard to establish a policy because everything is unique when this sort of thing comes up. Now, you know, if we need to do some additional planning or give some additional tools, that's fine, but I don't, I don't know how we're going to say, well, we're willing to give X number of dollars for certain things like that. I really think that this is an EDC thing that should stay there.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, this was not put on the agenda at the beginning. It isn't false. He didn't ask for it as old business or new business. I think that there needs to be some research done and be presented at a committee level.
Thank you. I think that, I agree with that, and I think that there should be some research done with that and maybe brought to the, would that be brought to the Labor Committee?
Community Development would be typical.
I believe there are other policies, Mr. Anderson, the council, that you can implement, research some of them, and the key thing is doing our job as the best of our ability to say we have an action plan in place. This is a tragedy, and I just feel for the families and the people who lost their job. These are skilled people, and we've lost them, and by no fault. I'm not faulting anyone on this, and I did that at the previous council meeting. I'm not faulting any of our staff, people ourselves, or the EDC, or Steve, or anything. It's just that we're going to learn from this experience, and if we have something in place, I'm going to feel a lot more comfortable as a councilperson saying I've done everything I can, or we can, to at least establish a baseline of what we're going to do in an action plan. We're always on uncertain times. It can happen to us next week. We could have another manufacturing company maybe go out of business. We could have anybody.
Hate to put you on the sponsor list, but how does the city administrator feel about this?
Well, I think it is, I understand Mr. Amen's concerns, and I think it is something that the EDC, I mean, the city and the county have created a joint EDC to be the primary group, I mean, to be the primary entity that focuses on economic development, both business expansion and business retention, and that probably is the most appropriate place to start the discussion in terms of are there additional tools that are needed or necessary for business expansion and/or retention? And, you know, certainly, we have a good working relationship, city staff with the EDC staff, and the EDC staff has also come before the Community Development Committee to discuss such matters so it can be done in that way, but I would tend to agree that perhaps it starts at the, a discussion with the EDC staff and with the EDC operations or governing body, and then that discussion maybe comes forward to the Community Development Committee if there's a specific change in policy that, you know, perhaps the city needs to, to look at.
Thank you very much.
That would be my general sense, and I think we could achieve what Mr. Amen's looking for in that fashion.
Councilman Christensen, do you have a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it is true that there is no policy at the EDC or at the council level, I suggest this topic be discussed at a committee meeting, Community Development, discuss it, and we can, we can say what we want in that policy, and then send it over to the EDC.
I think that's what the councilwoman Nelson was discussing, right?
Yeah, ultimately, that would be good. I guess, if nothing else, a motion of support for adopting a policy directed to the EDC would be appropriate. That's my, my full intention, is eventually to get it to the EDC, not to bypass any group or any councilman member without their input. That's why if it was referred to committee and then to the EDC, it would make sense.
So where are we at? What do we, uh...
Point of order, you have a motion on the floor?
I don't know. Do we, is your motion the fact that we support the EDC and we would like to refer this to the Community Development Committee?
That's not what he said.
That's not the motion on the floor. I mean, it may be, I mean, you've had, if I may, you've had a certain amount of discussion. I think the direction that I'm hearing is that you'd like to have some discussion perhaps at the CDC, at the Community Development Committee. Community Development Committee can discuss, you know, maybe making some recommendations or to the EDC for further discussion and bring it back at the appropriate time. So you can certainly make a motion to that effect, or you may, you could also withdraw the existing motion and concur that that's the general direction.
With that understanding, this is going to go to committee for discussion. I'll withdraw in a second.
So we have a motion that dies?
Mm-hmm. I make a, I make a motion that we refer it back to committee and staff and to bring it to, eventually to the EDC.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been seconded.
Would you repeat the motion?
Go ahead. Councilman?
Once again, let me draw our attention to our Home Rule Charter, okay? We just adopted it in December. The Home Rule Charter says very specifically, "The primary duty and responsibility of a city council member is policy development." I think that what Councilmember Amen is asking is pretty clear-cut, and it's a policy that we would like to just establish, and so let's follow the charter. Policy is our number one job, okay?
With that, can we have a repeat of what the motion is?
There's, oh, yeah.
Well, I have that councilmember Christensen withdrew his second, and then councilmember Amen made a motion to refer back, further matter back to staff and then bring it up with the EDC, and then bring recommendation to the city council.
Close.
Okay.
Bring it to committee, bring it to committee with the recommendation forwarded, their recommendations for discussion to the EDC. So what it says is that we'd have support of the council on this type of a policy. It would look more unified.
Mayor Yanis.
Councilman Fagerly, I understand, I see that you have another comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the council already set policy by having a joint agreement with the county for the EDC, and we have three members from the city council sitting on that, so if the EDC wants to make a policy like that, they can go ahead and do that. You don't need our blessing. We have the same situation with the CAT system. Bruce and myself sit on there. We make decisions for the city.
Councilman DeBleek, did you have a comment?
Just same thing. We have a EDC, a joint powers board with the county for EDC, and they're charged with making those types of policy decisions, maybe if they can take this item to that board and discuss it there.
The motion reads the matter. What is the definition of the matter? I mean, obviously, it's not a good situation that we're losing employment. I've sat and visited with some of the employees myself, but I think we need to go back to the EDC and have a discussion about what options are there in these types of situations and things that we can respond to before we just try to come up with the matter. I think there needs to be details in that, and so I think we need to go to the EDC first of all, and obviously, the goal would be if there is something we can do that the city council adopt that, but I think we need to refer it back to them first of all.
Councilman Anderson?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is where we run into trouble, folks. When we bring something up that we, that out of the blue, so to speak, and we haven't, we haven't thought about it, our staff hasn't, hasn't had an opportunity to react, we haven't gone through the committee structure, so I think that's a, that's a problem. I can understand and appreciate the concern, but I, I think we need to follow our structure where we, where we bring things up through the committee, and rather than bring it out at the end of a meeting when nobody knows anything about what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, I completely think everything you said is false. I'm sorry. Our job is to think. We're here thinking. If it comes to me at this time, I have a right to bring it up.
Point of order.
And it has to be brought up. Thank you. It has to be brought up, and that's what I'm elected to do. Furthermore, this is simply saying we as a council want to have movement on this, nothing more than that, and if it means we have to think a little bit, let's think about it. Then it'll go to the EDC. These are some of our concerns, EDC. As a city council, we're concerned about this issue. Let's, let's see if you can work on that policy, and let's see if we can get something that the whole county can use. Also, the issue is not just the city of Wilmer, not just the county EDC, it's every mayor and every city councilman in this county could be facing with the same dilemma. It should be a joint unified policy, so as a county, we are together on what we can do and how we're going to deal with the issue. This is not just the city of Wilmer and the county, county issue. It's every city in this community and every constituent in this community. It's very important to have one, and I think we should just, just do it. It has to start someplace. It may not be proper, but I believe this is the right way to do it. Get the consensus of this group and then move it to the EDC, and I've already talked to Steve Reinequist about it. He has no problem moving forward with it. Thank you. I'll call for the question.
I'll second the call for the question.
The motion has been seconded, made and seconded. Do we need to read it?
The motion would be to, the motion that's on the floor would be to close debate, and you would vote on that motion first.
We will close, the motion has been made and seconded to close the debate on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And the second motion?
That would be the original motion that's on the floor, and I'm sorry, maybe Ms. Peterson could try to repeat that.
The motion would be to refer the matter back to staff and that staff bring it to the committee with the recommendation forwarded to the EDC.
Go ahead.
And you made the motion. Is there a second?
There is a motion and a second. You've closed debate, so now you would simply have to vote on that motion. You can't have further discussion now.
We can't have, we have to vote on the motion to...
You, you voted on the motion to close debate, and you, and that motion carried, so there'd be no further discussion of the motion that's on the floor. You must vote on that motion at this point.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
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 I think I'll do a roll call. Councilman?
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
No.
DeBleek?
No.
Four noes, four ayes.
And it's up to the mayor to break the tie. I will break the tie by saying no. Move to adjourn.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Discussion, we are adjourned.